Good morning. It's 8:30 and I'm going to call the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 27, 2024 to order. First order or first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented, Mr. Chair?
A second.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Next is citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens that are here that want to address any issue that's not on the agenda? Steve, do we have anybody remotely?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Next, approval of payments, bills and vouchers.
I'll move the approved bills and vouchers.
Second.
Okay, have a motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next, we have approval of minutes from August 13, 2024.
We approved the minutes from August 13.
Second.
Motion to second, any changes or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next up, we have Kurt Cannon, Veteran Service Officer, and he is here to, on a request to hire an assistant. Morning Kurt.
Morning Chair, Commissioners. Just here today to request the approval to start the hiring process to replace the administrative assistant in our office due to retirement, October 17 is her retirement date, that's her anniversary date, so.
Any questions for Kurt? I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
And motion to second, any further discussion? And we're going to let Kurt off easy.
I knew this wouldn't be easy, but.
All right, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank Kurt.
Thank you.
Next up, and we're a little bit ahead of the schedule here, budget presentation, Lake Agassiz Regional Library. Yeah, we're two minutes early.
I think we're seven minutes early.
Seven minutes early.
Okay. To me, it's time. Let's go ahead of Commissioner Mojo, I believe is starting. Oh, here we go. Morning Liz, come on, have a seat.
I should take them stairs. Morning.
And Liz Lynch, with Lake Agassiz Regional Library.
I'm like just walking in.
We moved the meeting right along here.
Well, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. A little bit about Lake Agassiz Regional Library and to answer any questions you might have. Just as a reminder, Lake Agassiz Regional Library provides public library service in seven counties, and we have 22 locations within those seven counties. Our mission is to enrich lives and strengthen communities, and I'll start out by, sorry, I literally ran up those stairs.
No, that's okay.
I'll start out by giving you an update on Barnesville, Holly and Yulin, of course. So, when I was here last year, I do believe that I shared that Lake Agassiz Regional Library received a grant for $30,000 from the Otto Bremer Trust, and this was to update the interior of the Barnesville Public Library. And then in addition, the Barnesville Area Community Fund and the Friends of the Library jumped on board and raised an additional $25,000. And so with those funds, we were able to get new carpet, paint, furnishings, shelving. We're still waiting for a couple of items to arrive, but I do have to give a shout out to the Clay County Sense to Serve Program. They were so helpful. They removed everything from the library so that we could paint and carpet and then brought everything back in again, and we've used that program a couple of times. So helpful, so appreciative of that service. Also, another bit of news regarding the Barnesville Public Library, we have had the branch librarian there, Carol Van Brocklin, she has been there since 2015, and she is now retiring. And so we will be having an open house for her on September 7 from 10 to noon, and everyone is welcome to attend. The business at the Holly Public Library is going strong, and it is, in just the first six months of the year, circulation of the physical materials or the checkout of items is up by 16% and over the same time last year. And recently, an employee from our headquarters in the lower level of the Morehead Public Library had spent a day at the Holly Public Library, and when she returned from working on this project, she sent this really, really great email about her experience at the Holly Public Library. And she basically said that every computer in the library was in use by adults and children during that entire time. She talked about a mother who had a toddler who was playing in a, with age-appropriate toys provided by the library. There were school-aged children with this mother as well, who were checking out books. There were kids, a group of kids, working on a Where's Waldo scavenger hunt, and the librarian was also helping adult patrons navigate through the interlibrary loan service, which is a service that we offer where you can obtain books or materials from anywhere in the state of Minnesota, or really anywhere in the United States by using your local public library. And when she returned, she, this was my favorite part of her email, she said, "On my drive in and out of Holly, I saw a total of one person on the street, yet the library was teeming with life, and in the midst of it all was an enthusiastic, engaging, approachable Melissa who has made the library the hub of the community." And honestly, this is just a day in the life of the Holly Public Library, so Melissa Larson does a great job. In Yulin, Amy Nelson is the Link Site Coordinator. She's known for going above and beyond in that community. I don't know if you know Amy, but she is fantastic, and she does such an excellent job of connecting with the schools, the businesses and different agencies. And the Link Site is housed in the Yulin Community Center. I drove through there the other day and noticed they have received a facelift, and it looks, it looks fabulous. But I know that the community of Yulin benefits not only from the services offered by Laurel, but really from Amy's ability to connect with that community. So that was the Barnesville, Holly and Yulin locations. And then, of course, there's the Morehead Public Library. As far as signatories go, the Morehead Public Library does fall under the city of Morehead, but of course, thousands of Clay County residents use the Morehead Public Library, both residents from inside the city and outside the city. And of course, there's a lot of excitement regarding the new public library. We're so excited that the Laurel Headquarters will also be in this new community center facility. This is really going to be an amazing resource for the residents of Morehead and for the surrounding area. With all this excitement in the air, the Morehead Public Library, the current Morehead Public Library is really busier than ever. Already this year, they've checked out over 100,000 items, which is fabulous, and they've issued over 1,500 new library cards to residents. And I work in the lower level of the Morehead Public Library, and as I walk to my office and from my office, I am always thrilled to see how many people are using that library. Regarding the budget, all of you should have a copy of our request. We are asking for a total request from all of the signatories, it's a 1.77 increase. This increase is simply to maintain current services. The board did choose this lower increase of 1.77 because we do have healthy reserves right now. The one problem that we are currently dealing with is very low wages for frontline staff. In 2024, a library assistant position, which is a position where you check in items, check out items, shelve materials, help customers and assist with programming, that position starts at 1317 per hour, and our branch librarians, who are responsible for operating our locations such as Holly and Barnesville, start at 1619. And these employees do a lot for their communities, and they're really serving customers of all ages with all types of needs. We are in a position where both hiring and retaining staff is very difficult. We will be entering union negotiations next week, or excuse me, next month, and we usually, during union negotiations, negotiate on a three-year contract, and so we really are hoping to make some progress on wages, which would not necessarily be reflected in the request for 2025, but would be reflected in the 2026 and 2027 requests. Does anyone have any questions?
I've just got an observation, I'm on the negotiating team for this upcoming contract, and it really resonates that the approach that we've got here with our employees is we find the means to keep our level of compensation competitive with other job, other industries and other communities. And I think right now, the library's looking at that down the road, and it may result in a bigger ask. And I'll be blunt about it because I don't have to be diplomatic from this position, but it's worth it. We're moving into a situation, it's not just the Morehead Library, this entire county benefits from the services of Lake Agassiz. And down the road, you know, we may be asked, all the participants may be asked to come up with the, an ability to respond to the salary issues that we're looking at now. Anybody have any questions? Yes, Steve?
Mr. Chair, so Liz, you'd mentioned some healthy reserves, would, from, through the negotiation portion for 2025, would you be anticipating utilizing some of those reserves after the negotiations and then, and then in '26 come, come to our?
Yes. Yep.
Any other questions? Well, thanks Liz, we appreciate you running up here for us.
Well, I am supposed to be training for a relay, and apparently I need to do some more training. It took me a while to catch my breath there, so.
Our stairs are always at your disposal.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
But you were early nonetheless.
Yes.
We were, we were early, but as were you, so.
All right, thank you so much.
Take care now, Liz. Next up, Quinn Jagger, Jagger. I keep sticking E in there, man.
You got it.
Our social service director.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I am going to grab Megan, who I believe is outside, and she's going to help me with this.
Also have Megan Jensen.
Okay, we just wanted an opportunity to come here, I know there were some questions up with the Family Resource Center a few board meetings back, and I thought it would be a good opportunity for Megan and I to come to board and just give you an update on kind of the progress of where the project is. So I will take it over to Megan for the presentation. I guess at any point in time, if you have questions, feel free to let us know.
Perfect. Well, thank you for the time this morning. I'm Megan Jensen with Creating Community Consulting, I'm co-owner. We are a team of 10 that started in 2022. We mainly work throughout Clay County and Becker County, as that is where our staff live. And really, when we think about creating community, it's important to be connected in the community and know the community well to do that. And so just a little bit about us, we've actually had a number of contracts with Clay County. This one that we're talking about today, the Family Resource Center, is funded through the Sauer Family Foundation. Our role is funded 100% through that grant for the pre-implementation work, that's a very unique grant that allows for capacity building. We have also worked with Clay County Social Services in looking at addressing childcare through West Central Initiatives Grant, as well as a few projects with Clay County Public Health in relation to health equity. And so our, our team is really just meant to help support capacity building. We work with a lot of county entities, city entities and then nonprofits, really in helping to do some of the work that is really hard when staff are busy doing their normal jobs. And so we've really come in to help with planning, getting partners to rally around a common goal, a lot of listening sessions and getting input from families and community members to ensure that all decisions are community-driven. And so a little bit about the Family Resource Center and, and how we got here. So I know a while back, and I'm blanking on the exact time, I was here with Trent Gergs with the Cass Clay Community Land Trust. We had an opportunity with a vacant lot right south of Ramke Park, and we were exploring an opportunity to do a multi-use building there in partnership with the land trust as well as Jasmine Childcare. A lot has happened since that, but really that opportunity was the catalyst for exploring this Family Resource Center model. Now that things have shifted with that project, the land trust is no longer involved, Jasmine actually was gifted the land from the city of Morehead using CBDG funding, and made the decision to really focus on doing childcare, childcare well, and really being a partner in these ongoing conversations. We went back to Sauer Family Foundation and asked for an extension of our grant, and we were able to really reimagine what were the needs now that we were facing new opportunities. And so really, what we wanted to share is really why the Family Resource Center, and what is the data telling us? And so we have been working hard over the past year to just have conversations with partners, explore what this looks like. We are very excited, the state of Minnesota has put a lot of interest in this model, there's actually a state network of counties that we are meeting with on a monthly basis, so we get to learn from other counties across the state of what works, what doesn't, what have they tried. And really, from the partners and the data, we have had more interest in Morehead, just as there are more partners physically located here, but the vision is for all of Clay County. And so I just put this screen, or the slide on the screen, because this helps to illustrate why this is needed in our area. When the statewide average for median age is 39, and in Morehead it's 31 and 35, we are seeing we have more families and younger families in our communities. And then when we look at the poverty rate is almost double in Morehead, we are seeing that we have a lot of young families in need, and that's exactly what the Family Resource Center is built to support. So again, all of this is really based on national research through the National Family Strengthening Network. And so a Family Resource Center is truly just meant to be a community hub. It utilizes multi-generation, strengths-based and family-centered approaches, it's meant to reflect and respond to community needs and interests, so be adaptive as our communities change, and really help build that peer-to-peer opportunity for family connection. We know that connections in a time of need is one of the biggest protective factors that are missing in our families, and so again, that is really what the center model is meant to address. Really how it's been connected back to social services is that there is a lot of research that shows that this really can help increase the five protective factors that families need to be successful and not have involvement with social services programs. And so that is parent resilience, social connections, concrete support in a time of need, knowledge of parent and child development, and social and emotional competence of children. National research has shown that this model does have a very high return on investment when implemented, again, really locally into the local needs and taking into account the local opportunities and really strengthening what's already happening. This model is not meant to replace or duplicate any services that are already in place, we are really trying to coordinate and collaborate and then increase access and supports for families.
Got a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So I am on the Lakeland Mental Health Center Board, so we had a big update yesterday from partner counties that are doing similar work with the Sauer Foundation grant. The challenge for me in this role versus what I heard with the folks in their role yesterday is Clay County is really unique in the way that we have family service center across the road, and, and as I'm gleaning from what you're talking about, a lot of the need for connections and supports and family care and, and this, this whole family approach, what I'm struggling with is a lot of those supports and services are already provided across the road. And so, you know, how can you help me grasp, when you talk about not wanting to reduplicate services, and certainly as we're trying to connect with as many folks as possible for the, given the money that we have?
Yes.
You know, how would that, this model that you're talking about not exhaust the resources in the community, but then isolate away from what we're intending to have folks bring to the service center?
Yeah. I'm going to go to this slide because I think this will help a little bit, and yeah, definitely Quinn, jump in. One of the key components is more of that space that allows for families to connect with one another and more of that social aspect.
So like the community ed model?
Very, and, and adult basic ed is a partner in this conversation, and we're looking at, and I've got a graphic that'll kind of show what we're looking at, because you're exactly right, we do not want to duplicate, we do not want to create just another space that's the same thing, but really, we are seeing a need for specific aspects, and it's more around that social capital building, which is just not naturally going to happen within a space that a social service agency happens. There's that stigma and those barriers that families aren't coming here just to hang out and relax. I would also say on the flip side, there's a security issue and staffing of just how that space is set up, and so we would definitely be in partnership, but looking at where are other welcoming spaces that families want to, are already naturally going to find connection to other families.
Yeah, and the biggest thing that I would add to that is, is that stigma. I mean, we want to create a welcoming, open environment at the Family Service Center, but we still have kind of that reputation. A lot of what we do is reactive, and families can view it as punitive, and as much as the awesome preventative voluntary work that we do provide over there, there still is that stigma that comes with Clay County. So what's nice about a Family Resource Center, or at least the model, is that it really can focus on that prevention side of things and kind of disconnect that from what can be the scariness of Clay County.
So because I'm not around tables that discuss this further, my question would be, why then would we not address that stigma by incorporating more of that into the Family Service Center instead of creating something separate? You know what I'm saying? I mean.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think we'll get to that in a couple more slides, because we have feedback from both Clay County staff and partners, and also kind of the, the vision that we've started. Nothing's solidified yet, we're working with a core team, and so this is Clay County Social Services, this is public health, this is school districts, adult basic ed, community ed, nonprofits, and disabilities advocates, New American advocates. So it is a really diverse group that's helping us really vision, what do we think will be the most successful, and how do we scale it to appropriately serve all of Clay County?
One more thing to add to, a large component of a Family Resource Center is even something like the logistics, the operating hours, you know, our building is open, until 5, we lock the doors at 5. The idea behind a Family Resource Center is families that are working all day can access that or utilize that outside of regular business hours. So as you get into the, the logistics of the operations of what something like this could look like, even things like operational hours can.
So how is, how is that different than what Morehead is building right now with the community center? How is this different than that?
Yeah. Some counties, it is within the library, and we, we haven't even got to like a physical space yet. We're really working right now on bringing partners together in a collaborative network. What is happening is there's a lot of siloing of resources and services, and then it becomes families presenting in need of housing, right? Well, it's not always just housing that they're, they're struggling with, it's a lot of things. Then it's, well, go to CAP LP to get connected with housing, oh, now you need to go to social services, now you need to go to adult basic ed. And so really trying to make sure that they, there is a better seamless process of getting folks to where they need to go and connected with the resources, plus adding capacity through a community navigator that is not tied to eligibility, program eligibility. That is one of the biggest barriers we consistently hear, is that we have a lot of great community helpers with a lot of nonprofits, but they're usually tied to specific eligibility of the program in which they're funded through. So if they're tied to SNAP, they can only help those that qualify for SNAP. If they're tied to housing, they can only help those that qualify for housing, and there's often these little barriers that the family might not quite qualify for that specific program, but they're still in need. And so really adding that community navigator role that can help those families better seamlessly access those services that are already existing in our community. And I think, I think I've got a couple slides that'll help this come together a little bit more. I'm still setting some of the groundwork, but I really, what we've done over the past year is we have had conversations with all of the Clay County Social Service Child Welfare Staff. We have presented to a number of Clay County Partner Providers. I know we were a part of a mental health committee meeting, I know we met with a lot of the social service program providers. We've brought this to groups like Inclusive Morehead, and then we had a really in-depth conversation with the CAP LP leadership team, knowing that what we're talking about really fits in line with a lot of the work that they are doing and wanting to grow towards. Following the conversations, which is really just kind of an overview of what is, what is the Family Resource Center model, we actually got all 15 Clay County Welfare Staff certified along with 15 community partners in the standards of quality. in the standards of quality. Again, just trying to help set a really solid framework so that we can all be speaking the same language around quality when we're talking about family strengthening services. From there, we did a quality standards assessment with this Clay County Staff, a partner assessment with the partners that went through the standards training and then did some initial family assessments. And really what we were trying to use this towards was what is working well currently? And what would a Family Resource Center be able to add to that current mix? And so here are some of the opportunities for improvement that were identified by Clay County Child Welfare Staff. So things that really, what we would see are maybe currently not able to happen within the physical space or because of the more reactionary nature of the programming that is currently be provided by Clay County Social Services. And so really thinking about how do we enhance youth and family involvement in programming, stronger diversification of community involvement. Again, this really leans into our network approach, better family support, enhanced advisory, bilingual and diverse staff. This idea of a welcoming or neutral space, again, when we think about stigma and coming into even just this area, knowing that everything is so closely together for a lot of families that have diverse lived experience and barriers, a need for that heightened community navigation and then community partnerships. When we asked partners what they wanted to see, they identified a lot of the same things that the staff had. And they saw the following opportunities in addition. And so really that thought of the extended operational hours, where do families go? Or where do families call outside of the nine to five? Peer support model, again, really the Family Resource Center is open to all families. And when it is open to all families and all families are interacting, it allows for families to create peer networks so that they're learning from one another. And the diversity of those families that are coming together really leads to better results. Increase for support groups, again, that's social capital, meeting families where they're at, navigation, involvement of parents and youth in decision-making, and organic relationships rather than the thought of transactional interactions. And so we have created a core team. Like I mentioned, this is of diverse partners who are really helping us to finalize our implementation plan. So we've really been in the data collection, conversations, hearing from families, making sure that we have the information we need to really create a plan that will, again, not duplicate, but meet the needs of families and builds towards sustainability. We do not want to create anything that's going to go away after three years. We want to make sure that if we're doing this, we're doing it right and that it will be sustainable while being flexible and nimble to meet the needs of families in our changing community. And so really, this core team is doing a hard push this month to finalize and identify sustainable funding sources. So we have submitted a state grant that would be three years for implementation. That grant does not require any sort of match. It is the state's intention to get these up and running in different communities. The other option we have and we will be applying for is the Sauer Family Foundation. That is an up to two-year development grant. Again, no match is required on that. That will be potentially a slightly smaller amount than the state funding, but still a significant amount for two years so we can hire staff and actually get this off the ground running. I, in my experience, this is a very unique situation in which we have had a good lead time in this development process without requiring any sort of match. That will allow us the two or three years to really think through fundable or sustainable funding sources and making sure that we have a really good mix of revenues coming in so that it is not on one funder, one entity to make sure that this happens or doesn't happen. And so this is just a graphic, and I apologize, my handwriting is a little messy. We were kind of brainstorming. But really, in what we were discussing as part of the core team is how do we create this hub? Whether it is a physical space or more of that mobile coordination that would be able to work later, open on the weekends, work within spaces that are gathering, spaces already naturally happening, that feel welcoming, inclusive to all communities, and then partner with formal agreements the entities that are already doing amazing work. What this allows for is outreach back and forth, better coordination and handoffs of referrals, and brings folks to services that are in need. This hub, again, whether it's a physical location in the future or if it maintains more of that mobile model, will be really staffed by then a community navigator, a partner coordinator, and a family advisory board coordinator. Those are three roles that were really prescriptive in the state funding request and have been really shown to be the key roles needed to make this sustainable. And so really what we see Clay County Social Services is the lead partner and the fiscal host. Again, that has been the request from both Sauer Family Foundation and the state because it is seen as a preventative model directly impacting the social service programming and referrals. At this time, again, there is no match for that. They are really just helping to support that. We have included admin time in all grants so that that portion of the fiscal management is covered. The core team, again, those diverse partners would be collective and collaborative decision-makers. The family advisory board, those would be advisors and help support in family engagement. I know there was a question on this. That again is paid through Sauer Family Foundation, the stipends for those roles. That is evidence-based best practices to have those positions be provided with a stipend. Both the state and Sauer were very supportive of that request being included. We are confident in the Sauer Family Foundation funding moving forward. And so we would have that funding for the next two years and then feel confident that there are other local and regional funders who would be interested in continuing that moving forward. CAP LP has been identified as the contracted partner to have the staffing for both the family advisory board coordinator and the community navigator. They have a staff member who is identified with capacity, who will be taking on that family advisory board coordination. And then we are waiting on the state or Sauer Family's next round of funding before we would hire that community navigator. And then our team would take on the role of partner coordinator and ongoing technical assistance for project management. So then really through the extension of the current grant, which goes through November, we will be establishing that family advisory board. We'll be bringing them onboarded, providing them some training, and then also having them start to provide feedback and insight. We also plan to host a final community gathering to really release and share more broadly than just the core team, the final development plan come October and November of this year. So by the end of the year, depending on if we get state funding or just the Sauer Family Foundation, we will plan to hire those positions. As I mentioned, really the only position that would be hired as a new staff would be that community navigator. We've already got a staff identified for the partner coordination. And CAP LP has the staff identified for the family advisory board coordination. Year one is really going to be focused on strengthening existing partners in service delivery. With our state grant, we did request funding that could be used for some of those partners. So if we identify that we need more parent classes, and that's not something we currently have enough of in the community, we can enhance that. But really, the goal is that we're better coordinating so that those programs are more utilized by the families that need it and that we're really thinking through where are these happening? And how can we remove all of the barriers through partnership for existing programs? Year two and three would be to establish that formal FRC with consistent navigation services in line with family needs, including non-traditional hours, which right now is a really big barrier and nonexistent in a lot of current navigation services. Long-term plans then would be to continue to utilize that core team and the family advisory board to maintain operations and continuous improvement, provide that relationship-based navigation services, continue to really hit it hard with community engagement and feedback, and then make sure that we're expanding outreach and navigation to all Clay County through that established partnership. Anything I missed that?
Any questions for us, Mr. Chair, Commissioners?
Any questions? Commissioner Krabnikoff?
Maybe I do have...
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I'll just make a couple of comments as I've been in, what, three meetings now, I believe, as part of the core team. The one thing I'm really picking up on that has made me quite comfortable with this idea is the fact as we talk about going toward a community-based prevention model. I think that's very important to think about. The other thing is as we meet in that group, when I hear the enthusiasm with CAP LP in particular, which I'm active with, wanting to act as a navigator, wanting this community-type way of getting resources out, let's put it that way. And when we got away from the physical model right now into a mobile model where we've identified different places, in particular right now in Moorhead to start out, but yet at the same time as we reached Holly Barnsville, I just see a continuum of community that really could separate itself from what we're doing right here at the service center. The other thing that puts me at ease, I guess, is the fact that it's all subject to state grants and Sauer grants. There is no expectation from us at this point. And maybe there, maybe once we see, if it goes forward, see some successes, you know, they won't find those local people to bring that local share. But that can come in a lot of different ways other than just a levy from here. So anyway, I've become open to this. And I guess in my last three meetings, I feel like I've seen that enthusiasm. And again, to the school districts, I mean, there's just, it's more than CAP LP. It's a large group, so, thank you.
In your comments regarding the establishing the family advisory board, you made the comment that you would train them. What do you train? What do you train them?
Yeah, yeah, it would be how to serve on a board. We're anticipating that many of these folks maybe have never had that experience. So we'd provide them some onboarding, what does this look like? What is, how to make collaborative decisions, how to make appropriate recommendations? And then also on how they can help support further family engagement and so that they feel really comfortable in their role.
And I, just to follow up on what Commissioner Krabnikoff said, I, you know, I know Rhonda had been talking about this for a few years now. And I got the impression that she was kind of excited to talk more about this mobile concept. I really think that we need to, I think just going out there in the future, when I look at the page about the funding, and I want to be blunt on it, is that at some point in time, there's going to be requests for local funding.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
And the minute that comes to us, and I'll say it a thousand times, that when it goes on to our levy, you know, it's, it's, it's just a, it's the worst form of having to collect dollars for this type of thing. It's a very regressive tax. And I, you know, and I certainly hope as the long-term planning for this understands that we need to find resources other than regressive taxes to cover those costs. Even, you know, I'm not arguing that some of this might be beneficial and improve some quality of life. But at the same point in time, it can't be, it can't be paid for by regressive dollars. And the property tax levy is a regressive tax, make no mistake about it.
May I respond? Yeah, we, part of our core team does include United Way. We are having conversations with West Central Initiatives as there's a lot of counties within their region. And the other thing that I'm really excited about is the fact that we get to have conversations with our other counties to see, okay, how are you funding this? And there seems to be a lot of opportunity to use these next two, three years to rather redirect funding streams that are coming through the county. So one county that was way far ahead of this is Polk County. They actually used ARPA funds to do this, right? So it wasn't a new funding, they just rather, that's what they earmarked some funding they knew was coming in. Another county has used the homeless prevention dollars, again, to make sure that they could have another staff hired that really did help support increased access to homeless prevention resources. I think that there, that's what I'm excited about, is that we don't have to make those decisions today. We really get to look over these next two, three years and say, what are the funding streams that may be applicable? What are they currently being allocated for? What are we seeing as far as the change? And is this a good fit? And then when we think about sustainability, it needs to be a really robust mixture of funding streams, not just one entity paying for it. We don't want it to be three years down the road, the county's paying for it or it's not happening. We want to have that good mixture.
And I understand these things are, you know, these are new innovative ways of looking at things throughout communities. An awful lot of it seems to me to, it seems to gear towards, and social services plays a big role.
Yep.
All of this stuff. And with that in mind, you know, as you go through this process, is DHS the state involved with some of these? You might want to call them pilot projects or what have you. Are they involved in understanding all this stuff? Because some of them, it's, you know, the discussion could be, we need to redirect some of those funds, right? And that's what I'm hearing you say, that we might have to redirect some of those funds. So if that's happening, is DHS involved with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can speak to that. That's why we applied for the state grant. I mean, DHS is really supporting the model across the state. And I think that's why they've put some money set aside for this grant. I can tell you when you guys hired me on this that I'm not a master of the budget, right? I was pretty transparent about that. I've learned a lot already, but within the next two or three years, I'm certainly hoping to get a better grasp on it. Clearly Rhonda had a vision. Rhonda had a goal of what this looks like. And I've been playing catch-up on this. But it is my hope that there is some sort of creative way within the budget that maybe we can, through the conversations over the next two to three years with our community partners, maybe reallocate some of the things that could make this happen. I don't think that by itself is going to make this happen. I do think that there does need to be a significant investment at the state level as well on something like this.
Yes, yeah.
Which is why we wanted to go get that, or at least apply for that grant. It is a pretty competitive grant. I mean, we're hopeful, but I think...
I think you said a key component there, Quinn. You know, the state... I think you said a key component there, Quinn, like, you know, the state involvement, and the state involvement, you mentioned you don't want this to be a three-year deal and have to go away, right?
Right.
You want this to be able to move forward, and social services in the state of Minnesota needs to be on board with that.
Yes, and that's, I think, what is exciting, is they have, there's a lot of conversations happening at the state. So there's a network of counties that are really helping to drive this conversation with the state. We are looking at collective and consistent data collection and evaluation practices across each county so that we can really show impact to ensure that state funding is consistent, because that's what we're hearing from the national network, is that, yeah, it is a mixture of state, local, and regional funding that needs to come together for this to be sustainable long-term.
Yeah, I have one question, Quinn. We are taking administrative role in this. I know there'll be some compensation, but is this something we can do with current staffing without expanding the need for additional staff?
Yeah, the idea would be that if, you know, if the grant funds are obtained, then the admin costs for the increased needs for reporting and things like that, we would account for that as well. I think right now between, pardon me?
It would come out of the grant.
Yes, correct. It would come out of those funds to kind of recoup our costs. I think right now, between myself and Susan, we've kind of, we've kind of handled that. I'm not anticipating needing to bring anybody on with this state grant or Sauer grant. If something were to change past that timeframe, I would need to come to you guys or come to think about something.
But current staff is adequate to address the immediate need?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I apologize, I had to step out for a phone call, but, you know, so if my question or statement was covered, I apologize. But, you know, in just, in looking at the design draft and, you know, looking through key partners, I really, I really question how much of all of Clay County this is being served. It does seem really more head-heavy. And part of the reason that I was maybe more pointed with my questions earlier is I feel like the goals for the services and the connections that you're wanting to have really do exist in Moorhead already. And so I feel like we are duplicating that conversation for services in this area. There may be a need for that in rural Clay County and in our other satellite cities. But, you know, just as I'm looking, it is really pointed towards Moorhead perspective and Moorhead and partners. And I'm not saying that these connections don't need to be had. What I'm saying is I think they already exist. And having had, you know, I have brought kids to the WIC clinic in the Family Service Center, and I have sat through those discussions on healthy families and car seat safety and all of those conversations that have led to other connections for services in that building. And what I want to hear from staff and partners is how do we better utilize the services that we offer, not reduplicate that? So if I'm hearing that there need to be additional hours for families, which I get and I understand, does that need to be in another building, somewhere else in the county? Or is that something that we can work through after our, I don't know? So I, you know, I appreciate the conversations, I really caution us as to exhausting services, not services, funds, when we're, if we're going to reduplicate things.
Any other comments, questions? Anything closing, or have we covered it?
Well, I appreciate the questions. It's all good things for me to consider and take into mind and continue to advocate at the max level two for the statewide participation in this entire project.
And I do appreciate that this was on the agenda and have an opportunity to get an update on it. And I, you know, I, you know, I think there's both some optimism and skepticism built in here on this, and hopefully through dialogue and some of the things that Commissioner Mozo expressed, and some of the things that Commissioner Krabnik expressed, we can get to the better end of both of those as we move forward, so.
Just one follow-up. Thank you. I know in the marketing messaging that's been going on as you gear towards those September, October meetings, there was several updates that I saw that said Clay County is building. Please provide feedback on the building that Clay County is building. That can't, I mean, then people see that and come to us, oh, Clay County, what are you building? Well, we are building a withdrawal management and a new DMV. And so as you make those posts, the community be very careful, because otherwise, then it just assumes that this board has taken action, which we haven't.
One thing I'd like to speak to, at our last core meeting, we actually discussed kind of what branding and the logo would look like. Mocked up a couple of different logos and things like that. And one of them said Clay County Family Resource Center. There was a significant amount of dialogue about we need to remove the name, Clay County. If part of the rationale for this is the stigma that comes with the Family Service Center that we need to work on, why would we put the name Clay County in?
I want to hear more about this stigma about the Family Service Center. I, you know, I, not today, but, you know, we don't need to do it today, but I need to hear more about that.
Okay.
You know, if we have a five-story building over there that's housed with 120-some social service workers, and we got a bad stigma going on, we need to, we need to figure that out. Because we're supposed to be there to provide services, and providing services and having a bad stigma, those two don't sound good together to me. So I want to learn more about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next up, committee reports, and I believe we're going to start with Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I do have a lot of committees from the last week, so I'll try to be brief on those. If you have further questions, ask. Tuesday, after the board meeting, we did have a scheduled meeting that Representative Keeler had scheduled to discuss our PRTF strategy and discussion on what Clay County's path forward for that would be. Due to the announcement from Churches United last week, Representative Keeler was at the Capitol and so was not able to attend most of the meeting. However, certainly those discussions at the Capitol with, I believe, two commissioners were warranted. So Senator Kupac did join us. We talked at length about what that path forward and strategy is, a bonding ask, is it a general budget-type ask, how staff can help lift that project in collaboration with the both of them. And I think we do have a pretty good strategy moving forward. Certainly, we've committed or committed dollars, but then had dollars on hold for planning and moving forward. But I think we'll continue to move boldly forward towards those proposals. That evening, we had a long August Clay County Planning Commission meeting. We did have an IUP request for Crane Operational Business in south of Saban that did get approved. We had three requests for solar farms. One change is that in the past, we have certified or granted permits for one-megawatt farms. And if you drive throughout the county, they're up and running, which is really exciting. We approved one-megawatt farm application and two-five-megawatt farms. And so the difference, if you recall, we talked, when we created the ordinance, is that Clay County utilizes revenues from the taxes generated from the wind towers. And anything, any solar farm that is one-megawatt or under does not generate that tax that filters down into the counties. So the big change now is with five, two-five-megawatt farms, we will start the ability to collect on that. And we did not have any community input that was negative towards that, so we're really excited about that opportunity. We did then have a application for an IUP for a batch plant in southeastern Clay County. We did have a long, long discussion on that. That project specifically would be a two-to-three-week project that would send all of the asphalt into a project for Richland County. There was a lot of concern from the Planning Commission on the deterioration towards the road, particularly if it wasn't generating, utilizing material from that plant. We did find out that it would come from another Clay County plant, or another Clay County pit, so there would be some gravel tax generation on that. But really, when you're looking at the benefits to the Clay County, to Clay County, and then the detriment to the road, particularly to the haul route throughout several residences, we did deny that permit. I did have discussion with the project manager following that meeting to get creative, to see if there was a better fit for a location on a batch plant, either in Clay County or if there's something in Wilkin County. So I think they are working with a Wilkin County pit to see if that would make sense. Because that would, that would basically run two trucks, or a truck every two minutes, Ezra? A truck every two minutes out, that's not even accounting for the material coming in or the stuff coming back. So you'd have a semi every two minutes on County Road Two, all the way across Clay County, to 94, so, or 29, sorry. So we did deny that permit. Then we, the next day, I had the Red River Basin Commission Joint Powers Committee meeting. We did have an update from Eric Jones from Houston on the distributed detention update projects throughout the basin, and then had an update on DNR mapping from Andrew Graham from DNR. It's always a really good meeting to discuss projects throughout the entire basin. I attended the Solid Waste Budget Committee meeting, or it wasn't, I don't know if it's a committee, but it was a subcommittee, I guess, with Commissioner Campbell, myself, Steve, and then Cory from Solid Waste, just on the budget, grasping a hold of a couple different items that we needed clarification on before the full request comes forward. The next day, I attended the SWAC Committee meeting. We had an update on recycling and program updates, landfill updates, and then Commissioner Campbell gave an update on Prairie Lakes. The next day, or that same day, rather, right after the meeting, we had a, annually, we review the contract for the Resource Recovery Center with the City of Moorhead representatives in Clay County, talk about the budget, any items that we see happening. Clay County, or Moorhead provided us with the entire amount that it costs them to operate the Resource Recovery Center. And then, you know, certainly, we had ours as well, talked a little bit about snow removal coordination. I really appreciate the partnership there. And then that afternoon, I attended the MCC JPA meeting, large update on the property acquisition status reports and litigation action summaries. We did approve a relocation reimbursement request and took action on three acquisitions, and then also approved three appraisal reviews. And then there was one lease extension on a property that, due to a house move, needed to be pushed back just a little bit. Certainly, those are difficult to coordinate with all the different partners that need to do that. And then that evening, I attended the CAP LP meeting. We had a almost one-hour meeting, what, sorry, do you need me to pause?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I forget something?
No.
Okay. We had an almost one-hour discussion on the Churches United issue, and I really appreciate Senator Kupac being there. It was a really honest and raw conversation about how all of us who provide services in so many different ways mitigate that issue, and how we all have boards to respond to and auditors to respond to, and who is best to help, help in a capacity. Lakes and Prairies provides an enormous amount of supports to at-risk families and individuals, and they really aren't in a position to, or have the staff capacity, rather, to shift and take on such a large project. So they'll just continue to help in the ways that they can. Senator Kupac was really appreciative of all the different representatives and organizations that do such hard work. But I had talked to Steve earlier, who had talked to Quinn, and there's about $250,000 that Clay County, that's not the total, but Clay County is contracted with churches to provide housing supports, and there needs to be some documentation that comes with that. So there's about $250,000 in revenues that churches could utilize from Clay County through that contract, through DHS. We're the host for that, should that reporting happen. And certainly, that Clay County has provided ARPA funds, over $100,000 in ARPA funds to churches, and provides that support in that way. So everyone's trying to figure out the best way to support, helping them realize that $250,000, I'm hopeful, will be a large support for them. And then we did, there are several openings on that. Our chair for that board has been hired by CAP LP, which is an exciting continuation of the mission, so we will have a couple of board openings there. Commissioner Krabnik was there as well, so if I forgot anything, he can update that. Then yesterday, I was in Alexandria at the Lakeland Mental Health Center office. We did have updates from all of the Alexandria and Glenwood supervisors, good updates on the community needs and behavioral studies. They've now, they will be expanding through themselves or through partner organizations, a presence in all of the Douglas County schools, which Clay County has always said is such a huge thing for us. So exciting for them to have that opportunity. Talked about adding the drop-in center and how there are challenges and opportunities, but certainly that drop-in center provides such vital supports to the people in which utilize it. We talked about the gaps and what are, you know, what are the gaps for families? And when you have to, when you learn the skills for mitigating a behavioral health or a mental health illness, when you have to wait nine to 12 to 18 months for a placement, you know, is it really that helpful? So what are the larger needs as we discuss at the state what those gaps areas are? So I appreciate how they continue to look at where the needs are and how we collaborate and create opportunities to try to meet the needs of the majority of our communities. So we did then have a closed session after that, and we did give an update on the Moorhead business, or Moorhead Building Project, October 1st. They will be moving into the new renovated site, and they are on time and still have $80,000 remaining in a contingency. So as, you know, that's always good. And we will move into contract negotiations soon. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. On August 20th, I sat in for Commissioner Gross in the PIC meeting, and I'm going to defer that report to our board chair, who was also there. I may have some additional commentary to his report, but we'll see how that goes. And then on Wednesday, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, we did have a subcommittee meeting with Solid Waste to go over some budget issues. There was, Cory had mentioned that he might want to bring something up along with SWAC, and we were a little bit concerned about where we were with the budgeting process at that point in time. So we had a significant conversation about the budget, which raised some additional questions. And then, at which we'll, we're meeting again today on that. As a matter of fact, Cory had originally intended to present his budget to this board today, and we've asked that to go back a week, I believe it is. And we're going to have, we're going to fine-tune that so that we know what we're going to be requesting coming up here. Then on the 22nd, then, we did have the SWAC meeting, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee There's, we continued, Shannon Thompson gave a nice report on the recycling programs that we have there, and we did talk about, you know, the lithium batteries just seems to be a conversation, and the education, the importance of the education involved with the proper way to dispose of those. Cory gave updates on both the landfill and landfill activities and the overall solid waste activities. Is what's been reported to this board in the past, we are still having issues. issues with the overhead doors in that facility, and we're at the point now where we're basically saying, we need to have new doors installed, because there just doesn't seem to be the appropriate fix. And so we're, Corey is working on that, and of course, you get into those large garage doors, and there can be an extreme amount of waiting time, and we're concerned about having those properly installed and working properly before winter sets in, so that, that's gonna be a challenge in itself. And then as, in terms of, um, responsibility there, that's gonna be an, uh, an ongoing, you know, there's always somebody, uh, everybody seems to point their fingers at somebody else's, uh, being the problem, and ultimately, it should not be Clay County. That's the way I'll put it. That same day, then, we also had a, uh, Morehead Clay County Joint Powers Authority Board meeting, that's in regards to the diversion project. Commissioner Mojo gave a, a good report on that. I really don't have anything to add on that at this point in time. And then at, at, uh, three-thirty that same day, we also had our diversion Board of Authority meeting. At that one, we get, we have our, uh, usual updates, uh, several updates on, on, um, issues, and then one of the, we had two closed sessions, and out of those closed sessions, one of the items that we, uh, that the board did take action on was the, um, an employment, uh, agreement, term, termination agreement with the former executive director, Joel Paulson. And it basically, uh, dealt with an agreement based on the amount of, um, available, uh, time he had remaining for vacation and sick leave and that type of thing. So that, that was a process that went through, and that, uh, both parties have signed that agreement, and that should put an end to that discussion. Then, uh, yesterday morning, I attended the West Central Regional Water District meeting in Holstad, and I wanna thank Ezra for, uh, joining in and kinda, um, keeping update, up-to-date on what's gonna be going on. I'm, uh, the assumption is that he will be taking over that role on behalf of the county in, in January, and I wanna thank, uh, Commissioner Kravonoff for also being there, kinda, um, taking the place of Frank, Commissioner Gross, for the day to also, and I think you probably were even enlightened on some of the stuff that goes on there. Uh, the, the big thing that came out of that, you know, and of course, we're, we're really close to the filing with the district court, for, for, there's a, there's going to be a, uh, virtual hearing on September thirteenth, which I plan on attending on behalf of Clay County members. And that's just to kinda get the process going, where, where the, hopefully, the court will establish the first public hearing part of this whole, uh, um, concept that goes on. And, and I also wanna mention too, I wanna thank, um, Don for, for being there as well on behalf of Clay County. He, last time he attended virtually, but this time he was able to be there in person. We're, um... And I, and I do wanna mention that, uh, boy, I thought, uh, Don has really kinda put both feet in right away, because he's already, uh, been in contact with Cent-, with Central Initiative on, uh, some, uh, some additional funding opportunities that we have in this, this whole setup process. So I was really impressed with what he's, uh, his knowledge about these different agencies, and how they can be helpful. And, uh, so I was, I was quite impressed with, with, with that. Uh, I did, one of the things that I did bring up is, w- when, in the court filing, it establishes, we're asking the court to establish the board, and it's by individual, and by each county. And one of the questions that I, that I had was, well, okay, now, if, if the court has to appoint these individuals, what's that process gonna be moving forward? Are we gonna have, like, for example, Commissioner Gross is on there right now. In January, his term is done, he'll have to come off. Every time that happens, you know, over, over the life of this thing, are we gonna have to go back to the judge and get their approval or, or appointment? And what, so we tried to, uh, so Dan Marx is the attorney that's working on this on behalf of us. He's gonna try to incorporate in there where the judge would allow that to happen, uh, outside of the courts by just letting each board, uh, make those appointments. So, so we wouldn't, but, but as it stands right now, we would have to go to the court every time we had to replace somebody. And then we're talking, at least for right now, maybe, about the ability to have an alternate. Um, I, I think long-term, after this is established, I think, I think an alternate will probably go away, similar, like, right now, when we appoint people to the Buffalo Red Board or the Wild Red, we don't really have alternates. You know, so I think ultimately, when, when this is established, the idea of an alternate might not be, be right, but in the setting up of this, to, if we have one county board member who can't be there, we should be able to have another one be there in the establishment of this. So that, that's the purpose of that, so. Uh, and, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of really good work going on there. We've, we got, uh, some reports on additional funding applications that are going on. And I guess that's, maybe Paul would like to add something, but that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Kravonoff.
This is Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, I was at several meetings, um, that have already been mentioned, but I'll just give a couple adds. Um, so on the twentieth, um, I was part of the small group with, uh, legislator, uh, legislator Kupac, and our small group regarding the PRTF. Uh, one thing we are waiting for is from our potential provider with PRTF, uh, getting, um, the ability to find out what the word entity, entity means, uh, in putting this, uh, PRTRF in, in the juvenile center. So, uh, we'll, we'll wait for a federal, um, comment on that, and then we'll continue moving forward. But I think it's important, we began identifying people we might bring in, uh, other legislators and other groups, and, uh, you know, um, we have such large county support on this, uh, that to bring that narrative, uh, to the, uh, other legislators, so we get a good collective message out there, um, creating the need for this down the road, and, and expressing that mainly, um, not only to bonding folk, but to DHS, uh, directly. Uh, that afternoon, I had, uh, a finance committee with CAP LP. Um, everything's in good standing order on their fin- finances each month. Uh, they have good cash flow, been receiving sizable grants to keep their, uh, operations running smoothly. On the twenty-first, I, I also, through the, uh, Storical Cultural Society, had a finance committee meeting, uh, two parts. Uh, we received our annual audit report from Red Mill Roll, went down that and through the full detail. Everything's good standing, uh, a couple minor, uh, concerns in the audit, only, uh, that really can't be overcome, uh, and that's the size of staff, being able to look at all the, um, in handling the checks and, and those type things, oversight. But, again, that's something that's brought up every annual report, so, um, no real concerns there. We went through our July financials, and, um, we're at, in very good shape. Yeah, we're in that time of the year when admissions are high, and we've received our grants, a lot of gift sales are at all-time highs, so cash flow, uh, with the, uh, uh, HCS is very, uh, very good at this time. Uh, the next day, Thursday, uh, uh, we had another, uh, FRC core team meeting, and again, the presentation by Megan and Quinn this morning, I think, really reflected everything I've been seeing over the three meetings I've been part of, and I appreciate, uh, the openness and the discussion we'll be, uh, having as we move forward with this. Um, those two core meetings will be occurring, uh, once, once a month, and I plan on being in all those, uh, if possible. And, and again, we'll, um, I'll, I'll just add, I, I look forward to our fall conference, and we're at the Arrowood in September. We'll have AMC there. Um, they promote, you know, this model every time we're together, so I hope maybe to answer, um, some of the concerns, or, you know, maybe it's not a concern, getting the state involved in this, you know, with DHS, whatnot, maybe we can get a deeper discussion going on that, and really see, uh, maybe I can hear a little more firsthand where, where they're at, and then report back to y'all. Uh, the, uh, that evening, I had the CAP LP, uh, board meeting. Uh, Senator Mojo, you, you did a great job in reporting on, on the, um, discussion we had regarding that relationship with the CAP LP, Churches United, and again, and even to Clay County Services. You know, we, we're, we're active in providing, you know, supportive services, and that's our role. I think it's very difficult for a place for, uh, I'll speak now back to CAP LP, to be running an organization like this when they don't have the staffing, nor do they have the expertise, um, toward that area. Um, Tiffany Ross was our, uh, current chair. Uh, as mentioned, uh, she took a job with CAP LP, so she's had to step down from chair as vice chair. I guess I'm the chairperson now of CAP LP. And along with that, I'll, uh, as, by her also stepping down, I'll now be the chair of the collaborative. So a couple things changed with her leaving, leaving, so a little more involvement there and, and things I look forward to, uh, serving. Um, let's see. And then, uh, I guess finally to yesterday. So on Monday, uh, I had a couple meetings. Again, Commissioner Campbell mentioned about the West Central Regional Water District. I did enjoy the conversations there. Thank you, thank you for all your input and leadership, uh, with that group. Uh, I sat in, uh, for Commissioner Gross on that, on that, uh, committee for that day. Um, then, um, in the afternoon, I had the Cash, Cash Play Food Commission Steering Committee meeting, and, um, we'll see where things go. I, I, the Food Commission, uh, Cass County is, uh, re-looking at all their budgets. Uh, you hear that all the time on, on the news quite a bit. Um, the, uh, the money that had been given through grants to Fa-, uh, Cass County Public Health, um, seems to be, uh, uh, getting scrutinized, and maybe wanting to be used in other directions. Uh, we do have a MOU, of course, with, uh, with Clay and, and, uh, and Cass, you know, toward the Food Commission, and so we'll see what the responses are as they move along. And, uh, but there is concerns about, you know, the money that's been funding this is, um, we don't know exactly how it's gonna all end up, but I know it's, um, it's gonna be, um, it may be a challenge, uh, to move forward the way we have been, but I don't wanna get too far ahead, but it's a concern. Um, with that, uh, we will be having, um, our Food Commission meeting, uh, which we have new, two new Fire, um, Commission, uh, Commissioner Strand will be coming on, and then, uh, Commissioner, um, gosh, um, uh, Commissioner from West Fargo, I'm gapping out the last name, but anyway, two new, uh, Commissioners coming on the Food Commission Board, uh, coming up on September eleventh, um, at, uh, Fargo City Chambers. With that, that's my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just do have one follow-up.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Uh, last week, after the SWAC Committee meeting, we did, uh, I was asked by, um, staff to look at a field access approach that was next to our new DMV facility. It was identified that that had been substantially changed, and did then eliminate the access for that farmer, um, to get his crop off, or their crop off. Uh, so Commissioner Campbell and I have been working with staff on, um, getting that back, built back to the access in which it was. So there, uh, will likely be a slight change, um, from the contingency requested from this board to do that, but, um, as stands, um, there's a corn crop in there, and there's no way to access it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, last Tuesday, the twentieth, uh, I attended the PIC meeting. Quinn Jaggar, uh, from, um, had an overlap. He, he's going to request involving a, an intake employee that's been there thirty-five years, was it Kevin?
I think thirty-one years, I think.
Thirty-one years. Huge amount of institutional knowledge, and he wants whoever her replacement is gonna be upon retirement to have an overlap period where, um, can bring up her, the person who's taking her position, bringing her, uh, on board. So that'll be coming to the commission here shortly. And then Darren Brooke discussed a UKG system, uh, for recruiting and onboarding that will make life a lot simpler for our department directors, for everybody involved in the hiring, where you'll have one system that is uniform and, and, uh, effective, and that'll be coming to the, to the agenda in near future as well. On Wednesday, the twenty-first, had the Diversion Authority Finance Committee meeting. Covered the usual business approval bills, finance report, and cash budget report. Um, also, uh, Shelley Carlson, who's on the, on the board, presented a, uh, a summary of the Minnesota contribution to the board, or to the, uh, Diversion Authority, about fifty-two, uh, million at this point. Uh, that was in response to some questions raised by, uh, Commissioner Pipcorn over in Fargo about what the Minnesota contribution was. I think she gave a good, effective answer on that. It was also, uh, she did the same thing the next day at the full board meeting. Uh, earlier that day, I had a phone con- conversation with Karen Stracken at the State Auditor's Office, referenced the county's audit, just some of the boilerplate questions they ask at all audits. Uh, the following day, Tuesday, the eighty, uh, eight-twenty-two, had a similar conversation with Partnership for Health Exit Meeting on their audit, and I spoke to a couple of people from the State Auditor's Office, just to reference to the Partner for, Partnership for Health, uh, budget, and how it was, it was handled. Later that day, we had the Diversion Authority Board meeting, which Commissioner Campbell covered well. On Monday, the twenty-sixth, the Dancing Sky Special Meeting, um, we had a remote meeting that was called to bring board members up to speed on some pretty deep cuts in Title B, D, and E funding that's available, uh, for transportation, for, uh, elder meals, for a number of things. And we have bids out right now that, uh, are still being, uh, in the process of collecting, to see what kind of, uh, costs we're gonna incur with the meals programs that we've got in this region. It is, potentially, it's gonna be a very har- hard impact on our seniors in the state with the, the cutbacks in the programs that have been identified so far, but they provided us with some information, some which can't be discussed right now, 'cause it's involving bids, and we will have a November meeting where hopefully we can close some of that out. And that completes my report. Steve?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, participated in the PIC meeting, that's been well-covered. Um, also participated in the PRTF discussion with Senator Kupac and Representative Keeler's and members of our board. Uh, again, appreciate, uh, appreciate the insight coming together, uh, to, kind of, as we've shifted here, our, our plan a little bit, uh, to, to see that we still have that support. Uh, that afternoon, talked to, uh, Klein McCarthy in regards to the pre-design, uh, for, uh, for a non-severe, uh, facility, and, uh, potential remodel of the existing non-severe facility for a PRTF. Uh, again, I'll probably wait to bring that forward until we hear from, hear from Mr. Summers, from Solutions on, on whether that building, uh, has to be a standalone or not. Um, that afternoon, or morning, also met with, uh, Quinn and Commissioner Kravonoff in regards to a series of different issues. Again, just wanted to, uh, I think, thank this board, uh, for the efforts that they've put, they, in, in looking at solutions and discussing Churches United. I know that, uh, you view it as a value of committee, uh, our value to this community, uh, and you have many community assignments that, uh, that touch, uh, touch that, uh, that building. So, uh, Solid Waste, uh, budget discussion, that's been well, well addressed on the twenty-first, on the twenty-second. On the 22nd, participated in the SWAC meeting, and then the subsequent meeting for the annual contract review and, and annual budget review with the City of Morehead for the Resource Recovery Facility. Continue on with having several NACO leadership sessions, virtual sessions last week. Participated in the MCC JPA meeting, which has been well-discussed. Had additional conversations with Quinn that afternoon in regards to Churches United. With the 22nd, had a solid waste budget meeting, or budget discussion, a follow-up with Lori and Corey for our meeting this morning. 23rd, met with Kimberly from the Recorder's Office, just talked about maybe some future, future legal advice. She currently uses a, an attorney who has notified her that he will be retiring here in the near future, and while it doesn't take a number of cases per year, there is a need for, to fill that void. Just a couple other things, just to note, the empty pesticide containers are being collected at the landfill this week, 8:30 to 4:00, and so please participate in that if possible. I, just to note, yes, yesterday or last night, the, just to note, our Communications Department continues to provide updates that our DMV is going to be located at the Morehead Center Mall, and our, our DMV is, is, new building's completed, which we are tentatively have as October 21st. Our communications group has put almost weekly updates, but there continues to be questions, and I would assume with the City of Morehead now vacating to move into the former US Bank while their building is remodeled, there may be more questions. And so we'll continue to try to keep up to date. The last item I just wanted to bring forward is the Lands Committee. Matt is looking to bring forward a meeting on September 10th, I believe, after our board meeting. Commissioner Gross is a part of that. That was, is, Lands Committee is not something that meets on a routine basis, and so I was just reaching out to the board for their thoughts on adding a second Commissioner to that meeting in a couple weeks.
I believe I'm, I, we did discuss, and I'm going to attend that meeting.
Okay, all right.
I'm on that committee as well.
All right. I believe that concludes my report.
Brian? Darren? Sarah? Everybody's quiet. Okay. Well, if there isn't any other additional business, we'll adjourn. Thank you.